Good morning.
Morning.
Before we get the meeting started, here Danny's all these orders.
Lord, we come to you right now, God, with praise and gratitude. And we just thank you for what you do for us, Lord. I know that lots of times we take for granted what you give us, Lord, even in your creation. And we just want to take our time now to thank you for that. Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you have given us as individuals and, Lord, as accounting, that you have blessed us. And I ask right now, Lord, that if we conduct your business, Lord, that it would be pleasing to you and God, because you have ordained government under your control, Lord, and I thank you for that. I ask that you be with each family that's represented in here, God, that you be with them, give them a blessing. And, Lord, I thank you most of all for Jesus Christ, Lord, that you sent to save us from our sins, God, if we just repent and turn to him. But right now, I just ask that you be with this, be with this meeting, Lord, for asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next, we're not doing the pledge of allegiance. I ask Alex, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd just like to mention that Leroy, he'd be running past the way January 29th, and at one time he was a commissioner and served again. So if you would, he could talk. At this time, I'll call the order. Commissioner Feller?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Does everyone have a chance to look at the minutes on January the 26th? Have motion? Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is building permits. Kevin's wife's having some health issues, so he's not here today, but he did leave those.
Yes, we have one building permit for Kenneth and Ann Forby, location 450 Panthersden Road, parcel number 011600155C. It's for a barn, no subdivision, no flood plain, recommended for approval.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Terry, do you want to do your report?
Sure. This is the, you only get one sheet this time because it is the first in the month, first report of the year. All the totals go to match monthly and yearly. Total amount for this past month, $17,087. That's a little higher than normal, and most of that, I would say it's probably liquor licenses, isn't it? Randy?
No. So, no, I left a co-op, file 24 East and Flippes. Okay. And there should be more coming, I'm not sure where.
Any questions on any of the individuals?
We have a few changes that can need to be made to that for some legal compliance issues, but it's not affecting the operation of the program. So if and when we're going to act upon that, it's going to have to be some different wording on the agenda, so we can have that really ready at any time. But I, as I said, it's not affecting the operation of the program, so this needs to be done. It's just a cleanup item.
First under new businesses, approval of the bills. Does everyone have a chance to look at the bills? Make motion to approve the bills. Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to drop down the agenda just a little bit and do the resolutions first. There's a resolution for maintenance out there on the highway code. Big Kevin talked to you about that.
Briefly, he said this is a resolution that you guys have to do every year to allocate this money. I asked him if it's the same amount, the half a million dollars, and he said yes. It's basically spending authority allowing them to spend money. Motor fuel tax money.
Are there any questions? Have motion to approve? Make motion to approve? Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Next, we have resolution authorizing local match for township bridge program funding. It says the bridge, this bridge is to replace an existing bridge on the Alpo Waterworks Road over Cedar Creek. It's 1.4 miles northeast of Alpo Pass. It will use $8,000 from the federal aid matching account and $32,000 from the Union County Township Bridge Program. But actually, that's the match for the local ones. I make a motion to approve the resolution. Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's on the agenda the RFP for information.
I've been working on putting that all together for you guys. I sent out a request to all the department heads to gather information so that the people who've been on it will be able to, information such as number of users, number of servers, number of workstations, meaning computers. Once I get all that back, that's the final piece of information to put in to the RFP so that we can get it issued.
At the last meeting, Debbie Tansh had offered to look into some things and get some prices for some things, and she mailed those to me last night, so I've got those available for anybody that wants to look at those. Let's go back to approval of the PIS for year 2018, Union County Tend to.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what all you want to discuss in detail, but the budget that I had sent you guys earlier this week, it is a balanced budget. It is complete all the way through. We had started off with a deficit, a fairly large deficit that we had to overcome, but we do have a balance. Our mid-year projections for how we thought fiscal year '17 were going to end ended up being a little better, so that held out on the deficit. We eliminated all the transfers to the reserves, the general fund reserves, the courthouse maintenance reserves. We're not putting any money in the reserves for this year to tighten the budget. We went through department by department and tightened up everybody's spending and looked at what they actually spent versus what the budget was and if there was money that could be adjusted there. We eliminated the cost for doing the budget because we did it in-house this year versus last year when we spent $19,000 to do the budget. In a few offices, we eliminated some positions for those offices that's in this budget. Basically, we went through and tried to make the budget as tight as can be and make sure that we could get it balanced for the year. Anything specific you want to, it'll be, once you guys decide this is good, then we'll post it with, or we'll record it in Terry's office, and it'll be on display, a paper copy there for anybody, and then we'll also have it on the website.
That's for 15 days, right?
Yes, it has to be posted for 15 days before you can take action. So you won't be able to take action on this at the next board meeting, but you can either do it at the following board meeting or you can call a special meeting.
Do you want to, else have any questions?
I know that we've worked on this a long time. I look back over my hours, and in November and December, I was down here over 70 hours for both, 70 hours both months, 70 and 70. And I want to commend Angie for looking into this. I mean, it was long and tedious, and I know that we have to make some hard decisions because it's not there. And I think to overcome close to a $450,000 deficit and then to put forth a balanced budget like we did, it was a lot of work, and I just commend the people that worked on it.
I also appreciate everybody who worked on it, all the office holders, worked really closely with us, and it was quite a process. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the tentative budget for 2018.
Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Feller?
No.
Commissioner Hartline?
I'm going to vote no, and then I'll run the comments, and then I'll probably call it for vote. Okay. My question is, we've worked on this for the last five months, so I'll address you, Dale and Bobby, what's your plan? We've worked on this, tell me, tell me why you're voting no and your, your plan for this budget.
I don't have a plan yet, I just have to look at it.
We've been working on this for five months, and like I say, I've been down here for hours and hours talking to office holders, talking to Angie, talking to the treasurer, working things out. This is the budget, so if you're voting no, then tell me you've got a plan. Don't vote no just for the sake that it's easy to vote no, and tell me it's not for political reasons we're voting no here.
Absolutely not.
Okay, then I'd like to know, what's your plan? What is your plan for a balanced budget? Because we just keep going on and on, and like I say, meet the one, I've been down here working on this, toiling over it. What is your plan then for the budget? Because if you vote no and just say, "I don't have a plan," then what do we do? Just keep rolling this over and rolling it over? I mean, the state does that, and we're in a mess. So my question is, what do we do? Where are we at? And I'm all ears, that's why I voted no, because if you have a plan and, I want to hear, I'm all ears and I am, I am willing to listen to anything you have to say. So I'm, you, I'm all ears. You tell me how to fix this.
I personally have no problem at all with the balanced budget. It has to be a balanced budget. No problem at all with that. It's how we arrived at the balanced budget I have a problem with.
Okay, and I agree with that. I know we have to have a balanced budget, so tell me, tell me how we're going to get to a balanced budget other than what we have. You're voting no on what we have? Tell, tell me, I'm all ears, tell me how to fix it.
I think that is something that we need to talk about as a whole board instead of just piecemealing it out, a couple of people doing, you know, figuring out how it's going to be done. I think we need to do it as a group and all participate.
Okay. So you weren't involved in this?
You know I was involved in it.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
I also tried to set up a special meeting so that the board could address a lot of these issues, and it couldn't be done.
Okay, well-
But then everybody's here anyway.
Okay, well, we've, 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 right now, this budget is not on the board, it's not, it's not being presented, so let's talk about it. We're here.
I'm not ready to talk about it right now. I will talk about it, but you're not putting me on the spot.
Well, then we need to talk about it because-
Yes.
And we're here. We're here, you wanted to have an open meeting to talk about the budget, the budget's on the table, and we're all here. So let's do it. I mean, or-
We're not going to do it right now.
Okay, and Bobby, when you called that, I was going to be there.
We can do it today. I have no problem with that. We're just not doing it right now in this meeting. It's fine.
That's fine.
We've got an tentative file.
That's fine. You tell me when, and I'll make myself available. And I did before, when you tried to call before, I was made available. So it's, it's on the table, and I'm all ears because if we can get, if we can do anything else on this budget, I am, I'm all ears and I'm receptive to anything. I just, this is what, I personally have looked at to see a balanced budget. If you've got a better way, I'm all ears. I'll listen to it.
I agree with the balanced budget, always have, you know that.
Yeah, we have to. We have to do it. And like I say, we were $450,000 to come up with. If we can do this another way-
I think we're all in favor of that.
Yeah.
But again, somebody's got to come up with ideas for money, and that's not happening.
Okay, and so you, if you want to table this, then we'll table it, put and bring it up. If you want to have a special call meeting or whatever you want to do, I'm available. And we'll hash this out and put forth a budget.
Yeah, I have no, as you all know, I have no problem with calling a special meeting.
Yeah.
It's just getting everybody to hear it.
And I'll just add that this is kicking the can down the road because we're going to have the same problem happen come next November, only worse.
Max, not if you keep a balanced budget, you know? It's not kicking the can down the road.
Well, no, but you've got to figure out how to make the budget balanced.
Part of the problem, what's been done over the past years, have led us up to this point, and now we're having to deal with it.
That's what I'm saying, and we'll have to deal with it again next November, whoever's here. And as I previously mentioned in an earlier meeting, the revenues are constantly going down, and everybody here knows that's going to continue to happen unless we all win lottery, and the expenses are going to continually go up. So if you can give me an answer to that, I look forward to it. I mean, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings or cut anything, I don't have to, but somebody has got to make some tough decisions and live with it, and that's not happening today.
I guess we forgot the special meeting, I'm a little confused as to why we would need that to discuss the budget. We're going to be in the same room, the same people in the room, two days later and postpone the approval, 15 more days after that.
If we can agree to do it this afternoon-
Can we though? Because you didn't announce the meeting.
No, it wouldn't be part of this meeting, we'd just hold this one open.
I see.
Terry? Next on the agenda is the employment agreements for the county administrator, human resource director, ambulance director, and assistant ambulance director.
No. I read them.
Nothing on the content. Clarification for me was that these are all employees of the county board, correct? So in hypothetical instance, if, if the person's getting two conflicting instructions from different commissioners, what are they supposed to do? Are their actions, are their actions supposed to be guided only by votes or is it by informal requests as well? You know, I ask, I ask Angela to, I don't know, let's say I ask her to post the budget. She's an employee of the board, but I don't have sole authority to ask her to do that. So what is she supposed to do? Does she have to wait to do anything until we approve it via an official vote, or can she do things outside of that?
She has to wait until we approve it.
For all, all tasks? Like everything that she does or?
As far as this, there's legal requirements as to how it has to be posted.
Right, the budget was an example. I'm saying that for things like that, if she's receiving two different conflicting instructions from two different commissioners, what is she supposed to do? About things that may not require an official vote. The, it's just, it's hypothetical, I was just, when I was reading through it, it came to mind.
What you're asking is who's her direct office?
More or less.
Yeah.
And it's easy to say what's the county board, but I mean, she does things, she does things that the board does not legally have to vote on simply by the instruction or by an email from one or two of them asking her to conduct a specific task. And she's not the only example, when I'm thinking about it, we'd apply all four, but...
Well, I mean, just for me, just for me speaking, if you take the human resource director, she reports to the county administrator. The assistant ambulance director reports to the ambulance director. So we're talking about the two, the ambulance director and the county administrator, and me, from where I come from, they, they have control to run their, their department. You know, like if Grant, anything to do with the ambulance service, Grant does, and if he's going to, you know, if he needs permission or something from the board, then he calls. And my opinion is, he does it, and then if it's wrong, then we'll have a talk with him. But if he's the director and Angie is the county administrator, I for one on the board would give them sole authority to do what they need to do and then run it by, especially as Bobby is the chair, and then if there's a problem, then Bobby will contact us and then we'll contact her, but I would give them the latitude and the leeway to run, to run the department the way they see fit.
As long as it doesn't require a vote.
That's right.
I agree with that.
But here also with, in conjunction, like you're saying, I know they both work, work very good with the board. I know that Grant, you know, that on the chain, it's Max and I, Grant is always, he's always been good about, you know, information, relaying information. And of course, Angie, I know is in contact with Bobby almost on a daily basis, so my opinion on that, Alex, is to let them do their job, and if there's something that comes up, then if it's wrong or she does something, then we'll have a talk with her or she asks Bobby, and Bobby feels that we need to be notified. But other than that, let them do their job.
I'm going to do it.
That's my opinion.
If we need to put it in black and white, that might, might change the way this looks with that inverse flag or event.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what they do.
Yeah.
I've just got a couple of questions. As far as, you know, employment number and those aren't payable?
The minnows? Yes, Tyler ruled that the minnows are payable.
I didn't rule that.
Oh, not ruled, sorry. Wrong term.
They are.
That's my-
That was one of the, one of the things that I was leaning toward contracts with was the fact that, you know, at one time, it wasn't so, and being open and transparent, you know, with contracts, obviously, with, also Tyler sent an email, oh, it's been a couple of weeks ago maybe, informing us that if we go from a minimum to a contract, we lose some authority.
Well, it makes no difference to me what employment relationship the county commissioners have with their employees, but I was merely pointing out that you need to make an informed decision because the current arrangement that I understood the board to be moving to was an at-will relationship other than is limited by law, and the contracts as drafted have a cause standard for termination, which is much different. If that's what you want to do, that's perfectly fine, but I want to make sure that you know what you're doing.
Yeah.
And that is a significant difference from an employment perspective. In addition, I believe- In addition, I believe the rate of compensation currently is set each year by the board, and I believe the contracts had set compensation over each year, so that's also fixed. But it makes no difference to me whatsoever. I just want to make sure you are aware and fully informed when you make a decision. That's my job, to make sure you're aware and informed when you make a decision.
Well, I think we need to have everybody alike one way or another, whether it's a memo or a contract. The two of them are already under a contract, which is, Grant's was expired, I think. Is that not true?
Label part.
Yeah. And the rest are under the memo type.
Tammy and Kevin are both under contract.
Well, yeah, but I'm talking about Angela and Angie.
Well, there would be, there would be six that would be under the board, and as it stands, four now are under contract.
Right. So I think, you know, they all should be alike is what I was getting at, not counting how many. And I think it would be, be who the board to add these two to the other four instead of taking the other four off what they already have and doing the memo. It's just, I mean, that's my opinion.
I respect your opinion. After listening to Tyler...
And I will add to that too, Bobby. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I understand, and Tyler's email did state it's more in our favor, you know, memo type situation. But I think, again, having the majority of them already under a contract, I don't, I just think it would be easier and still and protect everybody to go to the contractual situation, so.
Mark's, Mark's services, after listening to Tyler, I think it's more advantage, advantageous to us to leave it like it is. I, I actually prefer contracts. My, my, like I said, my sticking point was that we were going to be transparent, that people were going to be able to see what we were doing. And I know that was an issue before.
Yeah. So are you saying, Bobby, if you're leaning toward the memorandum, then would you change the ambulance director and the assistant to memos?
I'd leave the contracts just like they are, and then keep all we've got as memos because that's advantageous to the county. And that's just me.
Yeah, well, I think that being consistent is advantageous to everyone if we're consistent on what we do instead of the six employees that work for us have four of them that are and two of them that aren't. I think, I agree with Max, we, we need to go one way or the other and be consistent in what we do. And as was discussed a couple of meetings ago, you know, when, when we were asked, is this in writing? No, we did not have it in writing, but with the contract, everything is spelled out, everything. Their job classification, their duties, the pay, everything is right there in a, I just think that as far as like you're saying, being transparent, I think a contract is more transparent. So that's, this is my opinion.
Is anyone else have any discussion?
We do have to do these one at a time?
Tyler?
I would advise that you do that.
Okay. First one is the, on the agenda is the employment agreement for the county administrator.
I make a motion to approve the employee agreement for the county administrator.
Is there a second? Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Feller?
No.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Would you pass? Next on the agenda is the employment agreement for the human resource director. Have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Teller?
No.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is the employment agreement for the ambulance director, which is a contract. Make a motion to approve the contract for the ambulance director.
Second.
I have a question. Do we have the contract? Do you guys have the contract prepared?
Yeah, you're all clear.
All right.
Yeah.
Union County. Not right now. I just want to make sure we have it prepared.
Yeah.
Who, who made that motion?
Max and Alex. No, no, no. Me, I made the motion. I made the motion. Sorry, my turn. Forgot what to do.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?